Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to this evening, May 22nd, City Council meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Yep.
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Mayor Paula?
Here.
And student liaison Everett.
Thank you.
Thank you. Conflict of interest declarations. Does any council member have anything they want to declare? Okay, I will have to recuse myself when item number five comes up, lighting the landscape district for zone three, since I live in the cottages and zone three is within the cottages.
Thank you, I just remembered, I lived there too, I have a note to recuse myself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very well.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be recusing myself from item five, zone one.
Okay. Any other declarations? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda review. Are there any changes or deletions to the regular council agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda during this item, during that item. So, any item on the agenda, you speak when that item comes up. Stu into the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must go, come to the podium when advised, speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and they will be allowed to speak one time under this item. And please sign the book, there's a book there when you speak, it's on the podium there. So, would anybody like to address the city council on any item not on the, please, come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is M.J. Delacuilla, I live here in Cloverdale, and I am the chair of the Christmas in June, which is the only fundraiser that the Cloverdale Food Pantry has. I just want to bring you up to date on a little bit of what is happening at the Cloverdale Food Pantry. As you know, it is run by four organizations, we take turn monthly, and staff the Cloverdale Food Pantry each month. It costs us about $20,000 a year to run the pantry, and that is, we buy food, we glean food, and if you don't know what gleaning is, we go to the different merchants around town, and they give us their pull dates or whatever's not selling very well. And so, those we pass along to the clients of Food Pantry. For those of you who know, this is for people who, their food security is not very good. We are just overwhelmed at Christmas and Thanksgiving. Everyone is very generous at that time, but by May, June, roll around, we're pretty bare. So, what I, what we did to compensate for the lack of that, we started this Christmas party for the Cloverdale Food Pantry, and we're asking the community to come out. We have a Christmas party, we'll have Christmas music, we have some wine and some, few little tidbits, and we ask you that you bring gifts for the food pantry, in ways of 20 to 50 pounds of rice and beans. One of the things that I've had the hardest time getting this month, it's my month this month, I'm running the food pantry, and I have not been able to get any peanut butter from the Redwood Empire Food Bank, and that's, we buy our food, what we can't get, or is not donated, we buy from the Redwood Empire Food Bank. And this entire month, I have not been able to buy peanut butter, so peanut butter's in real shortage. We love tuna, tuna's protein, and does very well, peanut butter is kind of the same thing, cereals, non-sugary, rice, beans, the staples. Cans of olives are not necessarily things that we like, but we appreciate anything that we can get. I understand, Joe and I've talked about it this week, that the town hall meeting has been planned and scheduled on top of our event, and I'm hoping that you will consider my request to push it, put your beginning time back a half, 15 minutes to a half an hour. Ours is from 5:00 to 7:00, yours is from 6:00 to 8:30, I believe. And if we could somehow compromise and work together on that, I did talk to Nina Hatchett about it, she said she would mention it on her website as well, that we could, you know, we can do both things, and hopefully, we can work that out. So, that is, I'm asking you to come, if you can come for 15 or 20 minutes, drop off your checks, bring your peanut butter, your cans of tuna, whatever, we would love to have you there. I say, it's a fun evening, we have lots of activities that involve the citizens who do come. So, thank you very much for this opportunity. You all in your packets tonight have the flyer that you probably seen around town, and it gives you all the information that you'll need to participate. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions for council? So, just a comment, and you and I had a conversation on this, first of all, this is an outstanding event, and thank you so much for all your hard work, and all the volunteers who spend so much time to help feed the hungry, we totally appreciate it more than we can express. But I do have to say, in fairness, the town hall's been planning for months, this is not something that was just picked a date, and trying to get all the speakers in place, it took a lot of compromise on our part, trying to find a date that would work for many speakers, and trying to get the facility that was available to accommodate the town hall. So, there was a lot of moving pieces to it. The date, and I shared this with you, I was unaware of this date, June 6th, being a compromise. You did mention that it was on the chamber website, I did go to that, in fairness, I'll admit, I didn't check it prior to locking that date in, but in fairness, it was not on there. There was a glitch in their system, and Nina's working to fix that. So, it's unfortunate that there is an hour overlap on these things, but I still feel, and I shared this with you, people could still go to this event, and at 6:00 or 6:15 or even 6:30, when they're ready to leave, join the town hall. So, it's a choice they can make, but to change it, that's not practical. Just as I suggested, maybe you can move yours back an hour, and you said that wouldn't work either, because the date's out there and the time. We have the same problem with the town hall. So, you know, I'm sorry that this did happen, but it's kind of beyond something that we can make a last minute.
I understand, but if you don't ask, you don't get.
No, I understand, I just wanted, for the, for the people, I wanted them to be aware, you know, certainly, this wasn't intentional, but it's something that's very difficult to undo at this point.
I just hope you'll support both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the city council on anything? Please, assign the book, and then state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Linda Freeth, Executive Director of the Performing Arts Center. I'm here tonight to express our gratitude for the very generous donation of $5,000 that has been pledged from city council. As you know, the building that we are in tonight has been here for over 20 years. The roof is original, and it is in need of renewal. We were very fortunate to have Senator Mike McGuire attend our fundraiser last year. Mike helped us raise $34,000, which we dedicated to our roof renewal fund. Not only was it a fun event, but we were ecstatic to have raised such a large amount. Roger Quinton, one of our board members, pardon me, an owner of a construction business, undertook the task of contacting roofers for an estimate. Unfortunately, we were approximately $4,800 shy of our goal to renew the roof. Your donation has put us over the top, and the project can now begin. Hopefully, this project can be scheduled for October at the earliest. We are at the mercy of the contractors' schedule to begin the work. We, our board members, staff, and volunteers, love our small theater and look forward to offering Cloverdale and the surrounding areas more great entertainment in the years to follow. We continue to seek out great plays, musical, musicals, and literary entertainment. Our next major project will be to install solar panels to aid in reducing our overall operating costs. I've been actively applying for solar grants, and would certainly appreciate any input that would help us succeed in this next goal. Again, thank you to all the city council for your generous donation. On behalf of the Performing Arts Center, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm glad you're going to get that roof repaired. Would anybody else like to address the city council on anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comments, move on to the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Would anybody like to have anything removed? Would any member of the public like to have anything removed from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, obtain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Walter, second by Councilmember Bagby. We get a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye.
And student liaison Everett?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're on new business, item number four. It's a presentation and discussion of a draft ordinance prohibiting the sales and distribution of nitrous oxide?
Nitrous oxide.
Nitrous oxide, okay, thank you. Within the city limits, Chief Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, may I please the council? This is a very short presentation, no PowerPoint today. The purpose of this such an item is to present a discussion of the possibility of toxic nitrous oxide, the sale of nitrous oxide within the city limits, by way of an ordinance. This issue's come up, it's two separate, independent subcommittee meetings, Mayor Paula expressed concern about students having access to nitrous oxide. Then I brought it forward, it's a finance police audit subcommittee. Mayor Paula directed the police department to create a flyer for the school, you'll find that flyer in your pocket. Nitrous oxide is bad, linked to serious medical illnesses, including mental health, and even death. It's also an addictive substance. It is not a controlled substance, however, it is monitored by the Food Drug Administration, not the DEA. Nitrous oxide tests have legitimate purposes, like cooking, automobile repair. Currently, there are two retail establishments in Cloverdale that sell nitrous oxide, and its hardware, and a smoke shop. Luckily, it's out, there are no automobile shops that can use large canisters of nitrous oxide. Nitrous oxide is also known as whippets. The mechanism for, just just is, bringing it in and get through a balloon. It's a very quick, short, devastating guy. Our department has found piles of the small silver canisters, and drug houses, almost the cabinets, under the river bridge, in various areas it's found over the years. Currently, the California penal code prohibits dirt activities, including the possession of nitrous oxide for the purposes of, you know, the. There was one other city in California, back in 2017, that took a complete plan, like I'm proposing, the city of Rialto, in San Bernardino County. They did not, they did not pay you with any resistance from the public, or from any preemption issues, which we'll discuss in a few moments. The made, the proposed ordinance is very, very brief. The made language of the ordinance states, it should be unlawful for any person in the city to attempt to sell, offer, distribute, or otherwise provide to any person nitrous oxide, a device to dispense, or introduce to nitrous oxide, or any device that contains a quantity of nitrous oxide. There are exemptions, including pharmacists and health professionals for legitimate prescription This proposed ordinance has been granted by the city attorney, where you have to sketch it about the possibility that the state law preempts our ability to regulate nitrous oxide locally, because the penal code has these restrictions. My rebuttal to that is that the penal code is very reactive. We have to wait to find out if a retailer is sold to a fighter, or to an adult, for the legal purpose. We have to go into the establishments, check their book logs. If we council chooses to move forward with this ordinance, those steps are eliminated. We become proactive and not reactive. The ordinance in front of you is more comprehensive, as it pans the sales out route, regardless I certainly welcome the city attorney's advice on preemption, and then I'm open to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from council?
No, no, I do have a comment, though, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I was reminded, going back about 40-something years to the 1970s, it threw me back to the latter days of my impetuous youth, but I can remember people, including someone who worked in a dental office, who became quite alike, was not a friend of mine, but it was someone, very close to someone I knew at the time at work, and this stuff is nasty. And those little canisters, if I remember, going down that nasty memory lane, I remember that whippet came from the fact that the canisters were used to make whipped cream. And so, I mean, imagine getting this kind of horror connected with whipped cream, it's bizarre, but I'm glad you bring it up, because I really didn't think about the fact that it was being used that much, it's, I'm so far removed from anything like that. It's very startling, and very scary, so thank you very much, Freeth.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to share that, two or three years ago, I responded to a single vehicle accident, it was right near the City Fire Station, where a vehicle lost control in the power pole. Power pole went through the passenger side of the vehicle, the driver fled, and hit the vehicle, or hundreds of the whippets, both used and unused. I called up with the driver, probably about six hours later, he denied using the whippets, he was the only one in the car. The whole point of the story is that, if the telephone pole had hit the driver's side, he would be deceased, and an autopsy would have revealed that he had been under the influence of the whippets.
Good, thank you. Any other questions or comments for council before I open it up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we've touched this item a couple times at our school, city, subcommittee meeting, and thanks to Patrick King for bringing this to our attention, and thank you, Patrick, for doing that, it kind of put us in action. And, you know, I have no problem bringing back an ordinance that will put an end to this, being sold in the city limits of Cloverdale. I don't think it was being sold properly anyhow, because if I understand correctly, when it is sold, there should be a record or a log kept of who's purchasing it over the retail counter, and that, I doubt, has ever been done in Cloverdale. So, I'm wholehearted behind this, behind this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments before I open it up?
We did touch this in subcommittee, and agreed that it was a good ordinance to go forward with. I think it's solid.
Thank you.
And I just, I wanted to just point out that the-
Yes, city attorney.
That, as the chief said, there's exemptions in there, so folks who need it for legitimate purposes, the medical professions, or food, the food industry's not called out in there, but it's included by reference to the penal code, so that's all covered.
Very well, thank you for that. And I just want to commend you on this very detailed staff report, very, very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to open this up for members in the public. Anybody who'd like to address the city council on this item, this would be the time to do so. Please come up, sign the book, and state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Joe, Gus, and the rest of the council for bringing this to light, being able to be open and, as a community member, and come to our council to discuss this epidemic that is amongst us across, you know, the states now, really. This is a huge issue. Before, as, when I was younger, you know, it was a thing, not much, but now, since prescription pills have become so hard to get, the children, adults are turning to heroin, a lot of different other methods of, you know, being comatose, and this has been an issue I've been seeing, I've taken a few people in the last six months to rehab from our local town here, one of them still is in, suffering from this, I've seen people with, never, never recover from nitrous oxide, permanent damage, death. It's really alarming. It's easy to get, it's easy to use, it's easy to get high, and what I, really brought me to that attention is when I've seen adults going in and purchasing it and selling it to our kids, and that was, that's an issue. So, being able to bring this up as a concern, and actually sit across from you people, you know, and have a real discussion about something that is a detriment to our community, I mean, I can't say enough, and the presentation, just have an open dialogue that we have is beautiful, so I thank each and every one of you for that, definitely.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public input, we'll bring it back to city council. Right now, my understanding is, this is just for information and direction, so I think we have a consensus, we'd like to move forward with this, it's an important ordinance, so if you can bring this back at the next meeting for action.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, if, if, if my reading counsel is correct, this seems to be unanimous, what the ordinance has written, I confirm this with the city that we can place this item on consent for, for adoption at your next meeting, if that works for the council.
That works. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number five, it's intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminarily approved, the engineer's report for fiscal year 1819, for the city of Cloverdale Landscape and Lighting Assessment District, and setting the time and date for the public hearing for zones one through seven, and when we get down to the resolutions, some of us will be recusing ourselves, so. City manager, you want to open this up?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the community, the item tonight is a consideration of resolutions of intent to collect annual assessments for the landscape and lighting districts for zones one through-
Could you speak into your mic, please? Thank you, so we can make sure everybody can hear.
Is my, is that, is my mic on?
No.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of council, members of the community, the item tonight is a resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments for zones one through seven. There are three separate resolutions in your packet, one for zone one, a resolution for zone two, four, five, six, and seven, and finally, a resolution for zone three. Tonight before you is Mr. Paul Wade, the Landscape and Lighting District engineer that was appointed by the council on February 13th of 2018, that initiated the annual proceedings for the fiscal year 1819, and appointed Coastland Civil Engineer, Civil Engineering as the engineer of work. One thing I wanted to point out that wasn't included in the agenda report was that a public workshop was, was also held this year on March 28th, here at the Performing Arts Center, where an overview of the various zones were walked through, in terms of the work that's being performed, and allowed the community to hear directly from city staff on the plans and projects within, within each of the seven zones. With that said, Paul Wade, Mr. Paul Wade did prepare an engineering report that was included in your packet for review. Some things to highlight, and I'm sure he will touch on, is that the annual assessments for zones one, two, three, and seven are proposed to remain the same as they were assessed in fiscal year 1718, and annual assessments in zones four, five, and six are proposed to be increased, but they're not to be increased more than the maximum allowed amount. Without further ado, I want to recognize Paul Wade, and he'll give you a complete overview of his engineering report that's included in your packet.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Paul Wade, I'm with Coastland Civil Engineering, and I believe this is the 12th time I've addressed this council on, on this item. The city of Cloverdale Landscape and Lighting Assessment District was initially formed in 1997 with Jefferson Springs development. Other subdivisions were annexed over time, there are now seven zones. The last one annexed was Sunrise Hills in fiscal year 2005, 2006, creating zone seven. In accordance with the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, which the city must undertake certain annual proceedings each year in order to levy assessments in the upcoming fiscal year. These proceedings typically require three council meetings. At the first one, the council initiates the proceedings by appointing the engineer of work to prepare the annual engineer's report, this year, that took place at the meeting on February 13th. At the second meeting, that's tonight, the council typically adopts resolutions of intent to levy and collect assessments, and sets the date for the public hearing. At the third meeting, the council conducts the public hearing, and then adopts the resolutions authorizing the levying of the assessments, that is proposed for June 12th in the resolutions. A copy of the preliminary engineer's report for fiscal year 201819 is attached to the staff report, and includes line item budgets for each zone. It also shows last year's budgets and line items for comparison. I don't intend to go over those unless specific questions come up on them. There's a spreadsheet, I handed out to you, a blue and yellow spreadsheet, that summarizes the budgets and the changes, and the third column in shows the changes by percent in the current, or upcoming fiscal year's budgets compared to last year's. One thing I wanted to point out is, in Vintage Meadows, zone two, shows a budget increase of 5.8%, but that includes the cost of maintaining the restroom this year, when in past reports, that has not been included in the budget because it's paid for out of the general fund, and so that, that's a little bit misleading, the budget would actually be slightly less if we didn't include the restroom. And we can come back to the budgets if the council has specific questions. In 2011, the city council established a policy of trying to maintain a minimum fund balance reserve in each zone of 25% of the operating costs for that year. The last three columns in the budget review spreadsheet indicate anticipated beginning reserve balance at the end of the current fiscal year, June 30th, the projected reserve balances at the end of fiscal year 201819, and those reserves as percentages of each zone's operating budget. Zones three, five, and six are projected to end next fiscal year with reserves below 25%. And as David mentioned, assessment increases are proposed for zones five and six. And then, and actually, those are to the maximum allowed, and they're still going to end, we think, below the 25%. Zone three is on, what I say is a watch list. It's close to 25%. The reserve's being drawn down, may need an increase next fiscal year, but we'll just keep an eye on it for now, and are not proposing an increase in the assessment. One other thing to note on this spreadsheet, if you look at the beginning reserves and projected ending reserves, all of the reserves are being drawn down. If expenses come in as budgeted, and that's just something to keep an eye on, they're not, none of them are building up at this point. For zone one, Jefferson Springs appears to be okay for another year or two. Zone two, Vintage Meadows, is okay this coming fiscal year, but like I said, it'll drop below 25% for following fiscal year unless assessments are increased. Zone three, the cottages, I'm sorry, is below 25%. Will likely need to be increased for fiscal year 1920. Zone four, the vineyards, has a proposed increase, assessment increase of $23.40 per ESD. Without that increase, its reserve would drop to about 20%. Zone five, Ioli Ranch, has a proposed assessment increase of $4.06, raising it up to the maximum permitted without balloting. And this zone continues to struggle and will require supplemental funding if costs cannot be reduced, or you could go to ballot the property owners. Certainly can go through that procedure. If you think that there's a likelihood that that would pass, then maybe that's something we should consider for next year or an upcoming year. The supplemental funding that it's getting from the general fund is not a huge amount, but it is coming from the general fund, so. Zone six, Brookside Terrace, has a proposed assessment increase of $35.54 and will face a similar increase next year. And zone seven, Sunrise Hills, appears to be okay for another year or two. All of this assumes that expenditures and revenues match the budgets. And some years they do, and some years they don't, depending on unanticipated expenditures, and sometimes it comes in under. So they are just budgets. Each of the zones has a built-in inflation adjustment to the maximum allowed assessment based on the Consumer Price Index. And this year, the Consumer Price Index adjustment is 2.9%. That adjusts the maximum allowed. It doesn't necessarily change the assessments. It just provides some ability to raise them in the future. And those adjustments are shown at the bottom of each budget sheet in the report. So this year, the engineer's report includes a discussion of general versus special benefits as they relate to Article 8D of the California Constitution, which codified Prop. 218. And only costs attributable to special benefits conferred upon parcels within the district can be assessed. Part D of the report also includes an analysis of the general benefits that Vintage Meadows confers upon the community at large. And just to back up a bit, at the front part of the report, there's a general discussion of special and general benefits and Article 8D. And then, within Section D of the report, the assessment apportionment addresses the special and general benefits of each improvement within each zone. Most of those are determined to have no general benefit to the community at large. Just because you can drive through a neighborhood and appreciate the landscape and it's maintained through the assessment district does not necessarily confer a measurable benefit to the community at large. With respect to Vintage Meadows Park, there is specifically in Part D an analysis determined what the general benefit to the community at large is. And that analysis determined it to be 23%. There is a budget contribution in zone two of $8,600 from the general fund. That amount is equal to 23% of the cost, budget cost of maintaining the park. That includes the cost of maintaining the restroom, but it's in excess of the cost of just maintaining the restroom. That's 23% of the cost of maintaining the park, which is only part of the budget of zone two. So it's not 23% of the zone two budget. And those numbers are in Part D of the report, if you're interested. There are, as David said, three resolutions to account for potential conflicts of interest. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council before we open it up?
I have a couple, Mr. Mayor, if I could. Paul, thank you for coming up 12 years in a row. I've sat up here for 12 years and listened to you. And before you, I listened to John. So you're much better. Thank you. Couple of quick questions. You touched on zone two, Vintage Meadow, with the general fund contribution because of the restrooms. Is that an increase from last year, that $8,600?
Yes, yes, it is. It wasn't included within the zone two budget, but it's, that $8,600 is more than what was, what would be budgeted just for the restroom maintenance.
Okay. And then on the cottages, why are we not increasing them? They're at 23%. They're supposed to be at 25. We have the vineyards. We increased them $23 a month because we were afraid they were going to slip below 25. Why are we not doing the cottages?
You know, it's a bit of a judgment call. 20%. If it was to 20%, I'd probably recommend an increase. 23% is within, I'd rather wait a year and see that the costs and revenues come in just as projected, rather than increase now and find out we didn't need to. Just being conservative.
Yeah, because I mean, we...
If, I'm sorry. We have not addressed the 25% as a hard and fast rule. So we make some judgment there.
Well, I, you know, the cottages residents are the most vocal about having any increase on that at all. And I hope that's not clouding our judgment of good fiscal responsibility on that fund.
I understand. That did not enter into the decision-making.
All right. And Jefferson Springs, they're at 58%. And are we going to be doing anything there to spend that money down, that reserve? Do we know?
I don't know. It's something that we've talked about over the years because it was well over 100%. And we talked about, gee, should we reduce the assessments? And I said, no, because it's drawing down every year, and we're going to get to the point where we will have to increase the assessment.
Okay.
But I don't know. Maybe Hector could address if there's specific plans for improvements in there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Any other questions from council before we open up? Okay, seeing none, Paul, don't go too far. There may be some questions.
I'll stay.
I'd like to open this up to the public. Would anybody like to address the city council on this item? Please come up, sign the book, and you'll have three minutes. And please state your name into the mic for the record.
Hello. Dan Brachalini, from the cottages. I think you probably know me by now. I have several comments I'd like to make about the engineer's report this year, but I'm going to need more than three minutes, if I could. I'd like to start off on page number, your number 69. It's the budget for the cottages. And for some of my comments, it's going to be representative of all seven districts, or seven zones. First thing I'm going to talk about is labor and administration. And the total for the cottages, again, this is representative of all seven, is, for us, it's $50,474. And I'm going to say that you are overcharging us for labor and administration. And the reason I can say that is that we are not a department of the city. We are a district. And as a district, we are governed by the Landscape Act. And if you go in the Landscape Act and read it, and look at the kinds of expenses that the act allows you to charge us, they do not say anything about overhead, administration. Part of the employee cost, we pay the city manager, the city engineer, and the finance people. And it's not spelled out in the Landscape Act that we pay for any of that. Okay? Now, let's say for some reason, you do, you say that we do owe, that we do pay for these people, okay? Well, now we got another problem because in the costs, we pay a percent of these employees' salaries, whether they actually spend the time working in the district or not. And that is against, again, it's against the act. And if you read this 22655, this is directions to the city treasurer, who I'm assuming is the city manager. And this is what it says. "Upon receipt of monies representing assessments collected by the county, the treasurer shall deposit the monies in the treasury of the local agency to the credit of the improvement fund for the assessment district from which they were collected." Now, listen to this. "The monies shall be expended only for the improvement authorized for such district." So when you charge us a percent of employee costs, and those costs are not spent on the district...
So this is three minutes. I'll give you two more minutes. You're going to need to sum up, okay? Five minutes.
I have a lot to cover here.
I understand. That's why we have the public hearings. You'll have another chance at the public hearing, but go ahead and get to the points, and we'll...
Well, I'm saying that, number one, you can't charge us as much as you're charging us here. And the computation for the reserve account, those computations aren't correct either. But I can explain them because you're not going to give me enough time. I have a way of tweaking this budget so that it meets all the requirements of the act. It generates a 25% reserve and actually lowers our assessment. And with that lower assessment, we can meet all the costs. We can meet a 25% reserve, guaranteed. And we can still reduce our assessment by a few bucks. I can, if you give me more time, I can explain that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would encourage you to speak with our city manager between now and when this comes back to the city council, so you could sit down and spend adequate time to go through it. Did you want to address that?
Mayor, members of council, I'm more than happy to take the time to meet with Mr. Brachalini to review his numbers, obviously pass those on to the designated engineer for review. You know, if he has a method and means of identifying how we might lower costs in the budget, most certainly we'll take a look at that.
And I would also ask that the city attorney take a look at those sections that were quoted regarding the administrative overhead. Make sure that we're in compliance with the law. I'd like to make sure. I know, I think we've looked at that in the past.
I'm confident we're compliant with the law.
So I just want to be, just reassured when it comes back. Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on the side? Please come down and sign the book and state your name for the record.
Good evening, council. My name is John Moke. I'm a resident of Buckeye Circle. And my comments tonight deal as well with the budget, in particular with the engineering cost. I am privy to some historical data. And it's something that, for the last three years, does make a lot of sense, numbers-wise. 2011, '12, the budget for the engineering cost was $8,600. The year after that was $86, $86. So that was pretty much in line and very consistent. And jumped up to $10,499 in 1415, and went to $11,000. And then all of a sudden, we started to see some hefty increases. 1718, it went to 30, almost $14,000. And 1819 is budgeted for $19,000. If there is a one-time cost in there, $19,000, then that significant increase, and I would like to know what that is. And then I would expect that 1920 would go back to a more reasonable number that does not reflect these drastic increases. I see the actual expenditures over time is in the neighborhood of $12,000 or so. And that obviously is a question for me. If you have an historic data that tells you that you actually spent on the engineering cost $12,000 or $13,000 or $14,000, why budget 19? But you might have a good answer for that, and I'll be happy to listen to that and accept that if it makes sense. So if there is a one-time cost for that, then I would like to know that. Now, it was interesting to find out tonight that the city has been dealing with coastal engineering for 12 years. And I'm just assuming that it's 12 uninterrupted years. From a business point of view, that is sort of concerning to me because that's not what I'm used to. If you have an outside vendor that you pay for services, then it is probably very prudent at one point to see if, you know, there should be a bid system. You don't have to do it every year because I understand there is a value to dealing with a vendor that has, that you know, and knows what's required of the report. But from a business point of view, it is not bad to check on that. And you don't have to do it every year. But if you want to do it every three years, then I would suggest, put it out to bid every three years. Now, if it comes back that, you know, the differences are not that great, the people that you feel comfortable are just a little higher, then I'd be the first one to say, stay with the people that you trust and know the system, you know, and know what you require. But from a business point of view, okay, just purely from a business sense, it's probably not a bad idea if you deal with vendors, to at least every three years, to put it out to bid, to see what other companies, engineering firms will charge for that, for these services. So I would urge you to do this. This is not the first time I brought this up. I have, I brought this up in a previous meeting. I made that suggestion. And I would urge you, the city council, to look into that and maybe take some action on that. Because an uninterrupted service from an outside vendor for 12 years is something that I am not used to at all. And I was in business for quite some time. So thank you very much for your attention, and I hope to get some answers for it, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. To address Mr. Moke's comments, I think he makes a valid point about soliciting competitive proposals. I will point out that with respect to professional services, under your municipal code, we're not required to necessarily bid this project. However, the typical process that we would utilize as staff is issuance of a request for proposals with a cost estimate. And then that would be used as the basis for determining the most qualified consultant to perform the work. And we think that that's a amenable process to use for selecting a consultant. And I think as staff, we've determined that that would be appropriate for next fiscal year, to use an RFP process, and then to review those proposals. Because I think with this type of service, it's important not just to pick the lowest price, it's to make sure that whatever firm is selected has got the necessary qualifications and professional background to prepare the report. We recognize, you know, Coastal Land does have that, you know, a high level of quality in their report preparation, and has a, you know, a very good history of, an understanding of the zones. And if we go out to RFP, we would anticipate that that would be reflected in their proposal. But the RFP process would ensure that they remain competitive in their price proposals that are submitted with the RFP. And that's what we would recommend in response to Mr. Moke's comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close it, bring it back to the council. We have a recommendation here for three resolutions to, we'll start with one.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from the dais.
Number one, that's what I was going to say. Thank you.
I'd like the record note that Councilmember Walter is recusing himself for Resolution 028-2018 and has left the dais.
Thank you. City manager and city attorney. Okay, so we have city...
Thank you. I'll introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor, by title only. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 028-2018. A resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminarily approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2018-19 for the City of Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, and setting the time and date of the public hearing for Zone 1 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Mayor Russell, second by Councilmember Bagby. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Polla?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Walter recusing? Excuse me.
And our student? Our student liaison?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Okay, can somebody get Councilmember Walter?
Oh, I'll get him.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Walter has returned to the dais. Mayor, members of council, with respect to Resolution Number 029-2018, there are no conflicts with the council's adoption of that resolution.
Thank you.
Or consideration of that resolution.
Thank you. Okay, so we have Resolution 029-2018. Would somebody like to introduce that?
I'll introduce it by title only.
Thank you.
City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 029-2018. A resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminarily approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2018-2019 for the City of Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, and setting the time and date of the public hearing for Zones 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, motion by Councilmember Bagby, second by Councilmember Walter. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Polla?
Aye.
Student liaison?
Okay, so if you let the record know that Vice Mayor Russell and myself, we're recusing ourselves because we both live in Zone 3, and I'll be turning the gavel over to our immediate past mayor, Councilmember Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Linda, would you, just reiterating what the mayor said, make a note that they've both recused themselves from the dais. And with that being said, we have a resolution for Zone 3 for the fiscal year that we are about to enter into, '18 and '19. Somebody like to make the...
Sure, I'll offer the resolution by title only. City of Cloverdale City Council, Resolution Number 030-2018. A resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminarily approve the engineer's report for year 2018-19 for the City of Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, and setting the time and date of the public hearing for Zone 3 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Brigham, seconded by Bagby. Could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell and Mayor Polla recusing.
And Everett?
And Everett.
Thank you, Everett. Okay, come on back, Joe. Carol, if you can hear me.
Let the record say that, show that Vice Mayor Russell and myself returned. Thank you. So we'll move on now to, we have subcommittee reports. So we'll start with the airport, and that would be Councilmember Bagby.
Our next meeting is June 5th at 8:00 a.m.
Great, thank you. Move on to Finance Administration and Police. That would be Councilmember Brigham.
Next meeting, May 24th, 2:00.
2:00, thank you. Planning Community Development, that would be Councilmember Bagby.
Our next meeting is June 19th.
Great. Public Works, that would be Vice Mayor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't, in the interest of time, give you all the information, but we had a very productive meeting, and I wanted to, in particular, thank our city engineer and public works director, Mark Rincon. He gave us some very, very good information. We covered everything from street parking along Elbridge to safe routes to school, Port of Field Creek. We spoke also about the City Park Master Plan and a number of other things of interest, including the Vista View slip-out. What I do want to point out is that we made a number of suggestions that certain items be returned to the city council for more consideration, so expect to hear a good bit. We need the input, and we also want to share the information. Is there anything in particular that you want to discuss, Mark?
Not at this point, thank you.
Yeah, I think we're okay, but it looks really good. I have just one word for everybody to keep in mind. The word is funding.
Yeah. Key word of the month. Money. It's always to happen.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the Joint City Fire District. We have not met. Our next meeting is June 11th, 5:30 at the city, or the Fire District Headquarters. And the Joint City School District meeting, we did meet yesterday. Our next meeting is July 17th at 5:00, and that's tentative. We have to find out if the school superintendent will be available because he was not able to make our meeting yesterday, and that is during summer break. So we're, but we had a, quite a long meeting last night, and we were able to recognize both our student liaisons. It was very nice, and we had the media there to take photos, do a little story, some pictures, present them with certificates of appreciation. And we had both of our scholarship sponsors there as well, and we recognized them, and they're both committed to continuing to support this program, and it's really nice. We also reviewed four applications for next year. We had four people that all highly qualified, looked really good, very difficult to narrow it down, but we did narrow it down, and we're going to do some follow-up to make sure that those two that we selected are still interested and that they're going to be available. And then we're going to move forward with getting them in place for next, next school year. We also talked a little bit about our school crossing guard program. It's very, very hardship to get people to fill those positions because they're very limited. So the chief came up with AAA as a program. They're going to look into it where we get youth involved in this by this program. I know I participated in a very similar program in San Francisco when I was a kid, so it worked very well. So that's exciting, and hopefully we can get that in place for next school year. Also, just to let everybody know, we talked a little bit about the burn pile at the airport. We're going to, the city's ceasing to use that. They're not going to be burning anymore. The school district used to partner and do some burns down there, and we notified them they're going to have to get a hold of recology and bring in a dumpster, green waste dumpster for that. They were fine with that, so we're moving forward on that. The tennis court refrigeration project should be starting in June, and so we're excited about that. And we're, that's pretty much it. We've talked about the swimming pool project that's moving forward. Still got a, we're working with the county, and that's looking really positive. But it probably won't be in place until 2019 swim year because we don't want to disrupt 2018, so, but we hope to have that fully functioning by, for next year. So that's pretty much it. Everything else you could catch on the minutes will make them up. So that ends my report. Any questions on that? Good, thank you. So we'll move on to city manager report.
Mayor, members of council, there's a couple items I wanted to share with the council. During the recent budget workshop that was held last Tuesday, the council expressed an interest in the, doing further work with respect to the Emergency Operations Center. Staff has begun the effort of looking at alternatives for an alternative internet service provider. We did receive some information by one of our planning commissioners, Commissioner Turner, I think he was here this evening, as well as initiated contact with Sonic Solutions, the internet provider as well. So just wanted to let the council know that we'll begin work on that effort in preparation for trying to get a backup internet service provider in place. Obviously, we'll have to wait till the budget's formally adopted, and that may be an item you may want to bring forward at the Joint City Fire District Subcommittee for further discussion.
Excellent.
Secondly, I wanted to report to the council that, under the direction of the mayor, we're going to, staff's going to initiate recruitment of the, for the vacancy on the planning commission. That's to fill a permanent, a permanent seat. So we'll be putting a notice in the newspaper as well as on the website. So just wanted to make sure that the council's aware of that, in case you have any interested parties that want to apply. And last but not least, coming June 1st is the start of Friday Night Live for the summer season. One of the changes you might notice that will happen this year is we've done some coordination with the Friday Night Live sponsors to establish greater recycling and composting at the event, coordinating with recology. Recology is going to provide some compost containers to enable the, kind of the food waste and other compostable materials to be deposited in the compost containers. And so what we're trying to do is encourage additional recycling at this event because there tends to be a lot of material that otherwise makes it into the landfill. So that's something, we'll see how it works. And the Friday Night Live project proponents, Cloverdale Arts Alliance, have really kind of taken this on wholeheartedly, and we've been coordinating that with recology. So we'll see how that works and kind of start it out as a pilot, and hopefully we'll be able to increase our diversion efforts.
Thank you. City attorney report?
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, student liaison has a report to provide.
I thank you for that. I was just going to go back to that, but thank you for that reminder. I inadvertently, as I started to say, bypassed the council report, so before we get to the student liaison, I'll ask the council, is there anything you want to share that's not in the package?
Just very quickly, I will have a complete report at the next meeting, but I did want to mention, I sent an email to our city manager and to our mayor because I was contacted by a representative who is, I believe, the executive director of the Cirrus Project, which operates out of Sebastopol, and it is an excellent, excellent project, particularly as it relates to training people in the food industry. They are working, and I don't think there's anything confidential about it, they are working with the county to develop a plan for food distribution in emergencies. And knowing that we're interested in this, I would have responded anyway, but I was particularly interested in doing so. So I spent some time doing some research and sent a list, quite a long one, of our restaurants and also of our facilities, our organizations, that could be of interest to them. Because what service is going to do is request, have the request for proposal kind of situation once they, I think, gets this plan up and running. And she wants to do it for each city, obviously. And I think Cloverdale is really in an excellent position to do it for this surrounding area because we have people here who not only know how to cook, but more importantly, in this situation, we have people, as I pointed out in my report to the executive director, who are vendors in reasonably large public events like Friday Night Live. And at first you might think, well, what is that? Well, then when you think about it, you realize that might have a lot to do with your skill and your staff's ability and your ability to handle a lot of people coming at you all at the same time. And also, you would be more familiar in those situations when you might need it, I explained, for doing some cooking outdoors, which is an art unto itself, from what I know. But anyway, lots of information going in, including about our commercial kitchen, so I hope we get some response in the coming months. Just wanted to alert you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to kind of piggyback on what city manager was saying with the Emergency Operational Center. I've been meeting with Jimmy DiMartini, Kate and Bonnie from the citrus fair, Mary Jo, and I believe Nina Hatchett. I kind of forgot who was on the committee, but we've been meeting at least once a month to improve the shelter, the citrus fair being used as a shelter. So we're coordinating a lot of, who do we call, where do we house people, how do we set things up? So maybe we should touch base on that as well. I'll keep you in that loop. And as always, David, you're more than welcome to join us at those meetings. I'll start CCing you on those emails. One more thing in your quiver to do.
Thank you for that. Okay, our student liaison, Everett, please.
Hello, city council. Thank you again for allowing me to come and present a report to you guys. Kind of a frog in my throat, so bear with me. So we have Project Graduation coming up. Graduation is on June 8th, and again, that's just a great event. I think it often overlaps with the first Friday Night Live. I'm not sure if that's the case again this year. Anyway, definitely, definitely a once-in-a-lifetime kind of thing for graduating class of 2018, of which Sammy and I are going to be a part of. And then Project Graduation, of course, is the organization that kind of keeps kids from going out and doing somewhat irresponsible things after that. So that's a good, a good organization that we have, very glad to have that at our school. We have yearbooks, we're running out, running out in quotes, because we only have 100, but our school only has 400 people, so. And they're, they are at $80 right now. Recently, we did AP testing. AP testing is a method of standardized testing that kind of shows where we line up in kind of respect to other, other high schools across the nation and the state. It's not quite like state testing, but it is more, it is more standardized, and it's offered across a wider variety of schools, and specifically there to test your knowledge for college classes that you took in high school, so you can get credit on your, off of your college, you can get credit before you get to college, basically. And there were, I believe, five AP tests administered at our school for the respective classes that are offered there or online. AP Biology, AP Spanish, AP Physics, AP Calculus, AB and AP Stats. The Time Castle project, I remember Mr. Walter expressed a little interest in that. Councilmember Walter, sorry. And so I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on that. Our final project is due this Friday. We have to complete a total of 35 items, and then our teacher also kind of sprung a surprise on us. We're going to have to do a speech on one of those items, and that's going to be our final, I think. So that'll be a lot of fun. For sports, tennis has been over for a while. I was part of the team that made it to the semifinals, so that was pretty cool. The baseball team for Cloverdale has made it to the playoffs for their region, so, and they're ranked seventh out of 16, and the top eight ranks get a home game, so they get a home game to start it. They're really psyched about that. We also have the spring sports banquet tomorrow night, that's Wednesday, May 23rd, and that's just to celebrate all of the spring sports and their various involvements. Interact, today we had our last meeting of the year, and we had a pizza party and lots of desserts. That was a lot of fun. And then we just got general end of the school year kinds of things coming up. June 4th to 6th, I believe, are our finals, and the last day of school is June 7th, and then graduation again on June 8th. The other thing I have is voting. Someone came into our class, I think it was our vice principal, Mr. Stewart, came into our class and passed out mail-in voting sheets. So that's a, and he came into the economics class that used to be the honors government class, so I think he knows what kind of group he's targeting. And he's got those given to us, and so I think, I think the mail-in deadline is passed for the June election, but I do know at least two of their classmates who registered, so that's good. And I believe Sammy did as well, which would make three. And so, and on June 5th is voting day, and we're all going to get to do that for the first time, and it'll be a lot of fun doing our own research and just kind of figuring out who we support and why. And finally, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be the student liaison, one of the... student liaison, one of the two student liaisons, um, and I definitely plan to be an active member of my community wherever I find myself in the future, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So it's really been a pleasure having you here, you've done a fantastic job, both you and Sam, Sammy have as well, so we, we, uh, just really appreciate all your hard work. I know it's been challenging.
So, Mr. Mayor, Everett, would, would you like to tell us, uh, where you're planning to go to school and what you plan to be studying next year? I didn't put you on the spot there.
There we go, all right. Um, yeah, so I was accepted to Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, um, and I will be attending there in the fall, and I will be majoring in computer science in the School of Engineering, and I've also looked up a couple groups that I want to join, one of which is a fraternity, it's still kind of tentative, but it's called Alpha Gamma Omega, uh, really looking forward to that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Black.
Your turn.
Okay, just one reminder, um, I encourage everybody that's available, you know, those that are going to be watching this meeting at home, to do, attend the Christmas in June, it starts at five o'clock, extremely worthwhile event, provide a tremendous service for, uh, at the food pantry, so please try to go to that, and our town hall starts at the Citrus Fairgrounds and the auditorium at six, but if you're a little bit late, that's fine, understandably, you've got two, two major events to go to, so I'd encourage everybody to try to do both.
You can eat a lot of Christmas cookies in an hour. I think everybody, everyone should try.
Yeah, something you ought to say.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, would you just, um, allow me a minute to, uh, make my excuse about not being able to attend the town hall?
Oh, absolutely, yes, please.
Thank you very much, um, I appreciate the mayor doing this. Uh, I unfortunately didn't know about the town hall before we made our reservations to go to family events back in New York, and the one thing that, the only thing that could keep me from going to the town hall is family in New York, mainly because they might kill you if you don't show up. Anyway.
We don't want that, we don't want that, please go. And you'll be able to watch it, it will be on YouTube as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, uh, with that, council directional future items, anybody have anything? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn our regular.